Okay, everyone, let's call a meeting in order. Please stand for the recite the Pledge of Allegiance and state standing for the indication following. Thank you.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, unencumbered, individual, liberty, and justice in our hearts.
Reverend?
Father, tonight we come to ask you to be with us here. We ask your blessings of the council, the mayor, and council that serve this community. We thank you for all those that do serve this community. We ask your blessings on them. And we ask that you just continue to lead God and direct us. This community can be an example of what we can do in a community that acknowledges you. So we give you thanks and praise for that in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen. Lady Tina? Okay, we'll begin with a roll call. Greg Smith.
President.
Lori Quinn.
President.
Mike Snyder.
President.
Adrian Saunders. Absent. Robin Simpson.
President.
Jason Osborne.
President.
We have a quorum. Let's begin with the mayor's report. The mayor's report is going to be, consist of review of what you have in front of you in your, in your, in your packet. Is a contract with Black and Beach. Black and Beach is the company that did the previous studies for the water plant. Water plant, what this is, how this is stated is an amendment to the water plant evaluation study, amendment number two. And this is an amendment to the original agreement from October 30th of 2019. So the benefit of continuing with Black and Beach versus engaging a new engineering firm is the new engineering firm would virtually have to start from scratch, do all the studies, which takes weeks and months to complete. And so what you have in front of you is a not to exceed contract.
Forty-five K.
Yes. Not, in other words, you know, you have to come back and, and get engineering changes approved, et cetera, et cetera. Is George here? George, you please step forward and explain some of the more complex details of this contract for me.
Actually, it's fairly simple. There's four goals or four items and their scope of work. One is to finish the engineering and provide drawings for switching from free chlorine to chloramines, which will reduce our total trihalomethanes in the distribution system, which is the that's what we've been a violation on. So whether you get the letter saying that, you know, there's an issue with the water, that's what it is all been. So the chloramines will solve that problem. Chlorine dioxide is the second item. And we currently are feeding chlorine dioxide. It's just on a pilot program. And DNR is now saying you have to get it installed permanently if you're going to continue operating using chlorine dioxide. Chlorine dioxide is a, is an oxidizer that specifically attacks manganese. And we do have high manganese in our raw water, so this is required. It's, once we started using it, our manganese numbers dropped greatly as well as the TH, TTHM numbers dropped. So we need to just get this permanently installed. We already have the generator. We have the scales. All we need to do is them to tell us whether they're going to let us put it inside or if they're going to require rebuild buildings outside. That was the big expense from before. That's why we shut it down when they decide, when the council decided to go to Clarence County. Then the third item is moving the permanganate feed from down at the pump house to the water plant. I'm looking at saving roughly eighty percent of the permanganate budget, which every delivery is roughly eighty-five hundred dollars and we get a delivery by every other week during the summer. So we should save a lot of money by moving the feed up to the water plant. And the last item is something that DNR put in our last about evaluation, that we have to put valves in our ponds, our holding ponds out of backup to water plant currently. When, when we blow off sludge, it goes to these ponds, the sludge settles, the decant goes down to South Lake. It's pumped down to South Lake. We should be able to just open up a valve and let it go into the creek right behind the ponds. That's going to say, well, tonight you're approving a bill to Illinois Electric for repairing one of the pumps that this would actually decommission. So it'll be there for backup, but it, it will save you money on maintenance as well as electric on the system. Then they will come, they will do site visits. I will work with them. They are not going to be our construction engineer. We will do the construction unless there's another building that needs to be built. As far as setting the scales, running the pipes, installing the pumps, that's all stuff that my crew will do this winter. But if it's, if it's above our abilities, then we'll have to bid that stuff out. So they'll help us write the bids, but yet we'll collect the bids. So we will, they're, they're, they're willing to work with us and do it as cheaply as they possibly can. Black and Beach is known as, they are very expensive, but they are also really good.
Good to pay for.
Yes, I'm, I'm very happy that they chose to come work with us again.
Both am I.
I hope that explained what we're, what you're looking at. So for the forty-five thousand dollars, you're going to get all the engineering, all the drawings. Bid packet will be put together. We will actually again put the bid packet out. We'll, we'll take care of doing all that. But that is just to get the final engineering and drawings done. And so basically, what we're working with here is getting our water plant up to where it can be standards. And then we would not need the cannon. I'm not going to say that that is what we're doing, but the, the total trihalomethanes have been an issue for your water long before people service that would came. We've, we've been able to change the treatment and we kind, it kind of goes like this. Sometimes we're too high, sometimes we're good. It's just not consistent. Chloramines is going to level that.
Level it out.
Level that out. So I know one of the big concerns is the consumers getting that letter every, you know, either three months or six months or a year saying that, hey, you had a, you know, your, your water has, has this in it. This should, should stop this. I'm not going to promise it will, but it, it should stop it because chlor, chlor, chloramines will stop total trihalomethane formation. But yet we still have to hit it with free chlorine first, which that's where they're forming. So it depends on how much free chlorine you have to hit the water with before you can then convert the free chlorine to chloramines.
George?
Yes, sir.
Is it correct to state that this approach is very much like the approach used by Clarence?
It is the exact approach used by Clarence by majority of
The water district.
Any large water system, St. Louis, Kansas City, Columbia, Springfield, yeah, nationwide. If you have a, once your water has a possibility of getting some age on it, the chlorine uses itself up and produces total trihalomethanes, which caused the issue. So if you just stop that formation of total trihalomethanes by converting to chloramines. The advantages and disadvantages, just real quick, chloramines don't last as long and they're not as strong of a disinfectant as free chlorine is. But yet, again, large major municipalities and they use it. You don't see people getting sick from, you know, waterborne illnesses. So our, our water age doesn't get that old. I would say it max, furthest out, they might be three and a half, four days, where actually getting the water from Clarence Cannon, we were already going to be almost nine days, is what they were projecting, I believe. I believe that's what, what he told me. Just because the line's going to be so big, it's going to take so long to move that water. It's only going to move so far every day.
Would, would it be also accurate to suggest that this is the first step to take in order to achieve option number two of the five options that were presented to the board?
I believe this would complete option number two.
Okay. I'm looking for clarification because there's just been a tremendous amount of technical information provided to the board and not just this board. This issue has been ongoing for almost four years.
Right.
And so there's, there's been a lot of work done to gather the information during that period of time for a board to make decisions. And so what I will now say is I would entertain a motion to accept amendment number two and authorize the mayor to sign the document at the direction of the Board of Alderman.
I'll make that motion to authorize the mayor to sign amendment number two of Black and Beach.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? We have a motion on the floor to approve amendment number two of the water plant evaluation study and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Black and Beach. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. It's a good step to take, a very good step to take. Okay, we need to approve the minutes from the August 22nd, 2024 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 22nd meeting.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the meeting minutes for August 22nd of 2024. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the minutes of the August 22, August 22nd, 2024 meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the city clerk's report. Alex?
Time's six. So I've been reaching out to try to have an idea on how other municipalities do Facebook accounts. It's been a smooth process. That was something that Donette wanted me to talk about. I've not gotten much feedback, responses from other municipalities, but it's been kind of a hassle. For some reason, they're not accepting our attempts to create an account to actually make a Facebook page in order to interact with the city. I'm not sure the reasons. They don't give reasons for, just say follow our guidelines, but I don't keep it from the September 11th, the city employees will be doing a demo for GovTech to kind of explore some other options with city software. It's been kind of an issue with G-Works lately is it's not doing a lot of what we needed to do daily work, like net metering for our solar customers. And many of our solar customers have gone through Excel spreadsheets instead of through actual software that's supposed to be utilities. Our Front Desk integration hasn't been the best and has had many kinks. We don't really have much training on it. It's been a intermittent learning on what we're doing. And we find that as soon as we fix one problem, there's two more because Front Desk and Simple City software in and of itself doesn't integrate well.
Alex, can I interrupt you?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain what those two software programs actually do?
So Front Desk is our software that allows customers to create their own personal accounts on there and link their utility account where they can make auto payments and see their bills. And Simple City is the actual software itself that we use for utility billing, for our bank rec, general ledger, pretty much everything we do in-house. And since they have started to move everything to the cloud, whenever we started purchasing this, I believe in '21 is when we purchased it. They're moving everything over and we have it on good authority that at some point they're going to start moving away from what we're used to. Given the issues we're having with Front Desk and many of the issues that other municipalities are having with Front Desk and G-Works as a whole with poor customer training and service times, it takes us about a week, a week and a half just to get a single ticket done. And it's, the holdup on that is extensive. There's also a lot of issues with double payments on customer accounts. People making accounts without attaching utility accounts. And they think they're on auto pay, but there's no utility account associated. So we're having issues collecting payments and double payments and then going through the whole process just to reverse a payment, get it cleared up in our bank rec, contact them and let them know the payment failed, they try to figure out what happened. It doesn't even give us reasons as to why they have failed or were refunded for any reason. The delays in e-checks have also been a big issue that we've had. A lot of our auto pay customers use the e-check payment option, which the council voted to absorb the dollar thirty fee to. And that kind of coincides with the credit card option, but we don't absorb those fees. But it takes about four to five days for our e-check to settle. So we won't know for almost a whole other week or so if we actually have the money or not. And that's been kind of a hassle, especially when by the first of the month, we're already sending out and creating new bills with other issues with that. It, it's something that has kind of caused us in many other municipalities, Palmarra, Chalona, and several others. I learned much of the issues that were also going on at that Murma Conference some time ago. Many municipalities are looking at moving away from G-Works as a whole because it's just been pretty bad since they were acquired. I believe they're called Data Technologies or something, you know, ask. So many, many municipalities have moved away. GovTech was one of the recommended ones. From Dean, I would want Palmarra to take a look at. So we're going to schedule this demo and see if it's something we want to explore moving forward with to replace our software and hopefully improve our overall efficiencies. We did health screenings and we're going to look at getting new rates and stuff as well, hopefully for too long.
We have to, we bid our health insurance, don't we?
Yes, we do. I believe Sarah and her company go out and they search for rates to try to bring that. We, we are in the process of gathering bids for that. And hopefully for too long, we'll have those presented to council. I'm just reading your notes on the short end of this. I don't see anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next on the agenda is the city attorney's report. The city attorney is obviously not here tonight. There will be no report. Excuse me. Moving on to authorized guest speakers, we have Ryan Huesman from Meco Engineering. He was going to, he is not scheduled to be here this meeting. He will be scheduled to be here on the 19th, at which time he'll be discussing airport, airport funding for potential projects. Next thing we have on the authorized guest speakers is Shelter Workshop.
So we're here about the curbside recycle. I think the first place we need to start is the city council to see if you would agree to a fee for each household in the city, just in the city limits for recycling curbside. That's just an example of what Hannibal does. It has to start out with the city council, then I think they do like a resolution. It goes on the ballot and it's voted on. I think they do a dollar ninety for a fee. You know, I don't know what would be fair for our town, but it would just be nice. We, it takes about three hours to go through the city to pick up curbside. And that would just be a help to us if we could just get a small fee, you know. And I think it, the way I talked to the city clerk in Hannibal, I talked to the board couple of works and they said it, it goes through them. I asked if they did administrative fee. They said it could be five percent, but they waived that because they just think that they support the Shelter Workshop in that way. So they don't charge anything to do it. So anyway, I guess the first step would be if you agree with it. And then it goes on the ballot for citizens to pass it. And then I guess it goes through billing through the city.
How many, how many residents in town approximately?
Twelve hundred.
You pick up from twelve hundred?
Well, that's how many.
Oh.
That's how many houses we pass. And that's how many she said she sends out until it builds on.
Do you know approximately how many households actually recycle? You have to pick up from, it varies from week to week, I'd say.
Yes, week to week. And we were doing it every week and now we've gone once a month. Because we just cannot
It's too expensive.
Go through the town once a week for three hours and get the amount of recycling, you know, to pay for that.
Do you get quite a bit?
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. It just depends, you know. And the city had the, the grant for the clear bags. And I checked into that with Marklin Solid Waste to see if there's another way that we could, could get the grant to get bags. And she said, well, she would check. You know, robies is carrying them, they're kind of a blue color. You know, they need to be clear so we can see what's in there.
Are they, the ones that are always clear enough?
Well, I think so. Were they clear enough? Okay, they're, they're enough. They're not too little, but we just have to see what's in there.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's just what we're bringing forth. I think, I think it has to be, they, they told me in Hannibal, if it goes on the municipal election, I don't think it costs much or, you know, it couldn't be like on another.
You know, I, I think we need to get this to, well, first and foremost, if the board agrees to, we get to the city attorney and have him review that. We're a fourth class city. I don't know if they're a fourth class city in Hannibal. I think they're a third class city.
Are they charter? No.
Palmarra's charter. And Lori, when I bring this up, the rules are different. The Facebook, most class.
And they just gave, that's just an example, as she said, just get off.
And
A lot of that wouldn't even apply to us.
I'm probably wrong, but we'll have, we'll have the city, city attorney take a look at this if the board approves it.
And the last page is just kind of talking about
This is not a ballot issue. I'm thinking this is a residential utilities rate issue. But I don't know that for sure because like you said, it gets pretty complicated. So what are you looking for per account?
I mean, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I think for our, oh, ninety's too high for our little town. I mean, even if it were a dollar, if each resident paid a dollar a month, you know, I think it would have to be at least that much.
Yeah.
To help out.
To help out, you know, to make it for us to at least cover our gas and the people who do it and everything else, you know. So that would be twelve hundred a month for us.
Got two employees that run on that truck. So that's six hours of labor for
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, but you know, until April, that gives you a time to kind of, you know, mull it over and see what you say. And we're just going to continue on once a month for right now. Now, if we got it, we could go back to every week or whatever, you know.
But there's just no way to gauge how much you collect. And so you don't know if it's
And when the prices are down.
Uh huh.
And then, you know, you got to stay in it if you're going to do it. You can't, well, no, I'm not going to do it now because rates are low. So you stay in it and hope they come back out.
Can you just kind of stockpile it some more or?
Well, we do. We definitely do until the price goes up. Yeah.
And then there's a price of gas and, yeah.
Yeah.
Which has been going up.
Yeah.
What's not?
This is not a good time to bring this up, probably.
No, I mean, we're just like
Grasping for what we can do.
Sure.
So in order to proceed
Thanks for your time.
With this in order to proceed with this
He's medicated.
What, what's the board's pleasure?
I ask, I maybe ask John
Okay.
To review it.
Give some thoughts on how we
Alex, let's get this, have you got a copy of this?
Yeah.
We'll give you a copy. Get that to John for review. Tell him that the board's asking for him to review that and determine what, what's the best way forward.
Yeah, because like
And we're looking at the dollar, at a dollar, initially we're looking at a dollar per account. Are you going to do the admin fee or not?
I mean
Were you planning on having an administration fee tax on the dollar?
I mean, they said it could be five percent, but they waived that.
The city can
That's because Hannibal processed the money for him. So like it'd be the same way if we collected the utility, then we paid.
Okay, so
So we'd have to decide whether we charge for that service. And I guess partly depending on whether, how much that service cost us to perform.
Would it depend on how they pay it too?
Well, it's in your utility bills. It's going to be included in your
Right.
Probably wouldn't add a lot of cost to it.
Not, not more than ten percent?
That's not what she said.
No.
Less than five, but Hannibal waived it for this
Yeah, such as, so the city council could charge, or the city, not council, the city, I guess, could charge Shelter Workshop, an administrative fee for handling the money to pass on to them. But she's saying Hannibal waives that fee and doesn't charge.
And we put it on our utility billing, just a flat dollar once per month. There's nothing really to do, other than cut them a check.
Right.
Isn't that, yeah.
So
Yeah.
Unless I'm wrong, is that how you understand?
I'm asking these questions so, I'm asking these questions so we go to John one time.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's one other question I would have is like if we decided that we were going to do this and so we passed an ordinance that we're going to start collecting, except if you determine that's the right way to do it.
If we're allowed to do vis a vis ordinance, then that'd be great. If it has to be put on the ballot, then it has to be put on the ballot, the process to go through.
But then I would wonder, okay, if we decide we're doing it, we start collecting fees for it, then like what's our obligations to continue the service or whatever if, because I mean, as you said, expenses change and all that.
I think it's in three years. I think if you do it every three years.
Okay, I say we just, just like John investigate it and report back to us.
Good enough. We don't need to do anything, just do that and we'll see what he comes back to the board with. Fair enough?
Sure.
All right. All right. Next thing we have on our agenda will be committee reports. In this case, we're getting a commission report, the planning and zoning commission is going to report. I guess I'm doing a report. All right. Planning and zoning commission approved the site plan from Farmer's Elevator and have recommended that the Board of Alderman approve the site plan for the Farmer's Elevator. In addition, they also approved the site plan for the Kathy Troy property, which will probably otherwise be known as BK's once it's completed a restaurant. So what I need is a motion to approve the site plan for Farmer's Elevator. Or I would retain one, how about that?
Tell them what it looks like, that they're good with it.
You want, you want to see it?
No.
You're saying it's been approved by
That's a recommendation the board's approve the site.
So I'll make a motion to approve the site.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the site plan for We have a motion on the floor to approve the site plan for Farmer's Elevator. Do we have a second?
Just real quick question, any major changes from when they were bringing that kind of layout?
Zero.
Okay.
Zero. He's got it over, if you'd like to take a quick look at it.
I'll second the, I've seen it before then, that's all.
Yeah, Gary and Chuck and, and Mr. Anderson were very pleased with it, so. All right, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, well, motion second on the floor to approve the site plan for Farmer's Elevator. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Site plan's approved, Farmer's Elevator. Second thing is I will entertain a motion to approve the site plan for the Kathy Troy property. Otherwise, we'll be probably known as BK's.
Where is that?
Behind Ben Franklin across from.
Let me, uh, let me get it out here real quick, right here.
Next to the doggy.
Amanda Buckman inherited this property and this is where it's gonna be right there. We'll have to do a street cut to the sewer, we'll have to bring in the gas line from the railroad side to it. I think the service is already there for the electric, it's not gonna be a huge deal for the city. Do you want to see, anyone else want to see this real quick?
So that's going down by our, do we?
Scott Conway.
Yeah.
Is that where Conway used to be?
That's where they're located.
Conway, Scott Conway's.
Oh, okay.
Oh, is that where?
Kind of, kind of.
There's a, there's a burning place going in right next to it too.
I guess it's already zoned, uh, so there's no zoning change.
Correct.
I mean, I don't see any big issue.
We just gotta go through because there is a building on site.
Into one of the.
The topographical line of building itself plus the utility approval itself plus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the site plan for the Kathy Troy property.
Uh, I'll make a motion to reprove that site plan.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the site plan for the Kathy Troy property. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the site plan for the Kathy Troy property. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next thing we have on the list is Parks and Recreation. Moving right along, Economic Development.
We didn't have a meeting because of Labor Day where everyone is coming Monday.
Excellent.
No.
Anything from Administration Committee?
Unless Alex or Phoebe have anything to add.
No, they're, they're actually here to answer any questions when we do the ordinance on the utility policy. So unless I'm missing something, is that correct?
Yeah.
Nothing on Administration, um, Newsness Review Board, Public Safety. All right, let's move right along to Department Reports, Police Department. Sure is nice to see you safe, Chief.
Yeah.
Um, I don't have too much. Um, we were coming forward last month for tires for patrol cars to switch out. You all also have a couple more quotes. So we did get those and it just, and the curb is still the lowest. The second bid came in, I think it was twelve or thirteen dollars a car more. But these are estate bids, I mean, the tires are ultimately the same price. It's just the labor, the labor's gonna be the difference.
That was one thing I wanted to check. I, I kind of looked after last time, uh, I don't know, I guess John, I mean, but when it's on the state bid, we, or the state spec sheets or whatever, we don't have to get fixed for those, correct? Because they're already, the state's already done that, been processed.
Oh, okay, okay, fine.
So those are one of those items that have so many restrictions on what we can and can't do. The state goes out, it's that bid for everybody in the state and that will be the lowest, so everybody will have to.
Sorry for the, sorry, we didn't get that part.
No, that's. Well, like I said, I was kind of following my afterwards, we tried to look a little bit.
No, I, I personally did want to go last, like I said, it makes sense, we want to spread that everywhere, so. So we've got the quotes in there. I'm sure one of y'all would like to go with, be the ones that would go ahead and.
I've got it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the bid from Tupperware Automotive.
There's two.
Oh, it's three vehicles.
There, yeah, three vehicles, so they got separate bids.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we accept the low bid for Tupperware Automotive for the, uh, these tires.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the bid from Tupperware Automotive for the tires for the law enforcement vehicles. Do we have a second?
I'll second, go ahead.
We have a motion second on the floor to approve the bids from Tupperware Automotive and Toyin for the replacement tires for, excuse me, for the police department vehicles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries, bid from Tupperware's is approved.
I appreciate it, thank you. The second thing I have is we put into the packet an expenditure form for a pocket jet eight. Uh, what those are is the printers that we have in our patrol cars give for print off citations. We have one that just went down, the other two have already been replaced by warranty. However, this one was a different model, it's no longer protected by a warranty, it's out of that, so this one will have to be out of pocket. And they are four seventy-four, seventy-five, so. I'd like to make the request that we can go and purchase that to get back into our patrol car. And that should be through Advanced Electric Design.
Uh, you mentioned a couple were covered like under like warranty fare. Have you been having a lot of problems with them or is it just they, we've got like an issue type of warranty?
It's just age. We've had those printers for several years, I believe they're four or five years old already.
Okay, yeah, that's.
So they're just aging out.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Advanced Electric Design for four seventy-four, seventy-five for the printers.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to accept the quotation from Advanced, Advanced Electric Designs in an amount of four hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-five cents for the pocket jet printer. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion second on the floor to approve the quote from Advanced Electric Design for the pocket jet printer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-five cents is approved.
Thank you. And then the last thing I have is October ninth and the tenth, we have the Murmas List Seminar coming up that is mandatory. So I'm just requesting that myself and the administrative assistant get registered for that and get the lodging for those two meetings, uh, so we can attend that.
This also does count for points towards our own evaluation.
Yeah, that's one of the things that are mandatory every year.
Oh, I'm, I'm definitely in favor, but I don't vote, I'm definitely a paid dollar.
It's not that bad, actually.
No, it's the amount that I'm talking to.
Okay, how about this? I, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, the, the total comes out to a pretty scary number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's frightening.
I'm sorry. How do I, how do I state this?
And actually, I would like to also correct that because that is only for one night of lodging and we need that two nights of lodging.
Ah.
Does that, does that change your motion?
No.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to deviate from the standard practice of going through all the details and simply ask for, to say that we have a motion on the floor to approve the chief and the administrative assistant to attend the police seminar. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion second on the floor to approve the chief and his assistant to attend the police seminar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries, approved, chief.
I appreciate it and I've drawn everything else, unless anybody has questions.
You're very expensive tonight, go sit down.
I'm glad you're up here. All right, uh, turning the page here. Next thing we have is fire.
These all make me nervous.
You should be.
Make me feel like I'm, make me feel like a kid going to the principal's office or something. So on August twenty-fourth, the fire department was running to a call. We were pulling out the airport for a man in zone and, uh, ended up taking out a telephone pole with my command vehicle. In thirty-one years, I've never taken anything out until now. And I'm not happy about it, but it is what it is.
Which has to be a first for everything.
I'm just thanking God that I was okay because the telephone pole wasn't. I'm sorry, Gary.
Was it one of our?
I know you were. I know. So you guys have a packet that I had given you and, uh, I had looked at a command vehicle from Fenton Fire. Now VFIS, they paid out on insurance, they paid out triple the amount that the car was worth, that the expedition was worth, which was, they paid out thirty thousand dollars, deductible one thousand, so it gave us twenty-nine thousand dollars. The new car that we're looking at is a Tahoe, two thousand and eighteen Tahoe. You have pictures of it in your, in your packet, similar to what the police department has. It's already fully equipped with everything except for the radio, so that's the only thing we will have to put in, which that's not, that's nothing. I did talk to the guy and, uh, at first, at first he, he wanted thirty-five thousand and I'm like, that's not gonna work. So I talked to him again and this and that and told him the situation he was in and all that and he told me, look, he says, I'll go down thirty-two eight fifty is as low as I can go. And I said, well, I'll go bait the council for that. So looking at what we deal with, so I have been fire chief for approximately two years. In that time, I've done probably about twenty-one, twenty-one hundred calls. You're looking at two hundred and fifteen to two hundred and fifty calls a year that we do, that fire department. You didn't know how, I didn't know how important command was until I didn't have one. I did talk to the guy, asked him if there's any warranty on this vehicle at all. He says it's a sixty day, major component, covers engine, transmission, rear end on it. It has the five-three engine in it. And before it leaves, it will be fully serviced. So he will change the hole and everything and make sure it's all, make sure it's all good. Now I just. Uh, yeah, and, and I asked him, I said, so where'd you get this car? And he said, it come out of Florida, stayed up. And I said, well, good, it hasn't saw salt, so that's good. Means it won't have rust, at least for a few years, because.
It won't have a head start on rust.
Well, I tell you what, uh, even the expedition, when I hit that pole, you ought to have seen all the rust had knocked out. And we fire washed it and rust had come out. And the guy was always after me, like, man, you're gonna have to get a new car. And I said, nope, I like this one, I like this one. But fortunately, I don't have that one no more. And right now I am, I'm using brush one, which is inconvenient for the guys because the situation is I'm taking brush one. If we get another call, then brush one's out of service because I'm in it. And then we have to go back, if we have a brush fire, go back, hook the, hook the trailer with the gator up and then I'm the one that'll be pulling it. So I, you know, I'm the only one in here, so I got two pieces of machinery that should have two people in the truck. And it's just, it is just an inconvenience for us. I know on Highway thirty-six out here, we use brush a lot for, for our blocker truck. We use, our big trucks are our blocker trucks close to the scenes and then we use brush one way back. And then we have command, command is always first on scene usually, unless the officers get there. My job is to go there, look at the scene, see exactly what we have going on and what we are going to need before the big trucks get there. Because there's, there's a big scenario, you don't know what, you know? If you may need to block this lane or this lane and they have to know which lane you want them in. So, you know, it, it's just one of those deals. I would like asking if I would ask money, that's not my, not one of my things I like doing, but this is something I have no choice but to ask.
What year was the Explorer, sorry, what?
Oh, eight.
How many miles it had?
Hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And I'd had it, I had it ever since I became chief, which was about ten years. Mike Hale was the interim chief and he is the one that chose, he was the one that was hired to, picked the fire chief, he picked me, we went, we bought the vehicle. It's one of them that come from Tom Holden Ford. It was a civilian vehicle, didn't have any lights, no nothing in it. So we had, oh, we had to build it and it was, it was just horrible. I'd never build one again. It just took a long time to do it and a lot of money.
Chief's got his.
Now we have all the stuff that we need.
Chief's got his hand.
Has, have we tested over this?
We haven't.
It's in Florida.
It turned, oh, I thought it was in Illinois.
Is it in Florida?
No, it is in Illinois.
Where at?
About two, about two hours south of St. Louis. I have been in time.
Did they supply Carfax with it or any type of, any type of inspection for it?
I don't, I don't know. This guy, Fenton Fires, this is all this guy does, is sells patrol cars, fire cars, fire trucks, all that stuff. And that's his business, you know? So he's not gonna be selling junk because if he did, he wouldn't have business loan. And he has more than one company. Missouri, or Illinois is not the only place that they have this.
You can see that.
Uh, Chief James, do you have a question?
Uh, just to kind of support what you're saying, uh, this is, the thirty-two thousand is a very competitive price for that, most of those vehicles about the same age, the same mileage, you're looking about thirty-five thousand plus you got about five thousand lights, you're gonna win it. So it is very competitive price and it's also one of the most reliable, uh, gear things, so. As far as products, go for the emergency service side, it's one of the more reliable time periods, so.
Yeah, so in, in that situation, we will get twenty-nine for the expedition, distance thirty-two eight fifty, which comes out to thirty-eight fifty, two thousand eight hundred fifty. That's what we're looking, that's what we're asking.
Have we already received a check from the insurance?
Not yet. I'm expecting it anytime. I already have, uh, I've already got confirmation from the insurance company. They've already sent a letter and I have already give it to.
Wow, diligent to me and that sort of.
Yeah. I'll give it to the administration downstairs. Yeah, they've already got all that, so.
So what was the total truck price then, that, uh?
Total price was, uh, three thousand two hundred, thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty, I'm sorry.
Thirty-two thousand.
So you're asking for thirty-eight fifty.
Correct, thirty, yeah, thirty-eight fifty, yes.
Whole deal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, when does the, the new, the, what we voted on, that takes place January one?
I have no idea. You know, and, and I get it, I get it, guys, you guys, I, I get it, between you and the rule board, I get it.
Right.
I'm here to run a fire department, I don't care nothing about the politics. I just want to, I just want to do my job.
But it can come out of that money, can it, the rule of fire?
It would, yeah.
I mean. Oh, it would come out of that?
No, not now.
Oh.
But in January.
You gotta, gotta keep in mind that we have to separate rural fire from fire district as two separate entities. What we're, what we're dealing with right now is what, what type of agreement we will, we'll come up with or end up with with the, uh, district, the Monroe City area fire protection district. And, uh...
And that can't take any place, uh, January one?
I tell you what, you know, if, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, I, I said, that can't take any place any sooner than January one? We could have that under...
Well, let, let me say this, okay? All things considered, if the chief was to go approach, we can't, but if the chief was to go approach, uh, the district, and ask them if they would supply the thirty-eight fifty, in other words, the difference between insurance settlement and what the actual cost of vehicle is, that would be something you all consider. That way, the city's not out anything. And the reason why this is being discussed is, uh...
And then I'm gonna, I'm gonna watch that resolution.
This is for these guys, this is for these guys, this is not for yous, this is for these guys to consider, is that, um, the, the, the district has asked us to provide to them all of the equipment that the city owns. So, if that is the agreement that happens, they would be getting this vehicle along everything else that, that's basically, all, all the, all turnout gear and all the equipment. And so, uh, the board could say, well, you know, we're not out anything, uh, if we use, the city's not out any additional money, if the city was to agree to spend the insurance proceeds, and the district would provide the balance to purchase the equipment, the truck, the command vehicle. Just food for thought, I'm not suggesting you do this or that. I'm just throwing that out there for you to consider.
What happens if, if that's for you, like, if that is the case?
Well, that means it takes a lot longer for me to do anything. You're looking at another month. I mean, they only meet once a month.
Can you ask them to call a special meeting for this?
They probably could, then if they don't pass it, then what? And we go back to where we're at, this car gets sold, and I'm out. You know, because, I mean, like I said, it's just an inconvenience for these guys. These guys shouldn't have to deal with it anyway.
Well, under normal, under, under normal circumstances, this is a slam dunk, it's a slam dunk. We need it, we get it, but it's nothing's normal right now, unfortunately.
No, I, I get that, I get that. I'm here to serve the citizens of Monroe and my district. And that's what I ask. This is, this is a safety concern by not having the right equipment to do with that. Believe me, if I didn't have to, I wouldn't come ask for, you know, last thing I wanna do is ask for money, but, especially right now.
I mean, I, I don't know, I guess, at, at this point, we're still operating. Now, operating's not the right word, but the fire department is still under our purview. And there is the three thousand, but of course, if you go up to the total, it's thirty-two thousand. You know, 'cause that's one way we could get rid of the equipment, is if it was all purchased by insurance, but, but...
What are you gonna do with it directly?
Uh, VFIS takes it. They, they have it down at the station right now. So, we, we have stripped it down from what, you know, the lights and the radios, and we've got everything, all the emergency stuff out of it. We're just waiting on VFIS to come get it.
So, their payoff is including them taking the vehicle? What about all the equipment that was removed?
We keep it, right? Do we keep the equipment?
Yes, yes.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The fire department keeps it.
Yeah, we would, I mean, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we would keep the light bar, and we keep the ra, you know, all that stuff would be, would be ours.
I mean, what's your plan, what's your...
Equipment, not build a vehicle, huh?
What's your plan for that equipment, since you won't actually need it?
Well, we could split it up amongst the trucks for, for things that, and a lot of it is, you know, and I didn't realize how much equipment I actually had in that.
Yeah.
Because the situation is, the command vehicle is so, it, it's, it's used on everything, which means I have to carry everything. I carry the thermal camera, I carry the gas monitors, I carry, I carry the, the foam applicator, uh, and everything else. Because if I have a structure fire in the rural area, you gotta have this stuff. If I have a structure fire in the city, you gotta have this stuff. Well, not both trucks go to these, but the command vehicle does. It goes to everything, and it keeps everything. I keep, I keep spare vests, I don't know how many times I've had guys come up and say, hey, you have a vest? Yeah, go look in the command, there's one in there, I got one for you. And they'll, they'll get a safety vest out of it, uh, and stuff like that, but, yeah.
I was just thinking if, if you could sell that equipment to make up the difference in price, but...
Well, and that's, that's, I don't know that equipment'd be worth anything. It really, I mean, it's ten years old, pretty much.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know the light bar, it, it had, I had a state trooper come up to me one day, and he goes, hey, you know, you got light out on your light bar? And I said, yes, sir, I do. So, I said, I had it in the budget, I don't have a budget. I said, I tried. So, you know, I'm, I'm right there with you, I don't...
Command is always on scene first, and it has everything we need, whichever truck we're using, is all centrally located in command. You know, like the thermals, and the smoke, and the gas, and whatever we need, it's located in that car. So, if we're out in a rural, we take engine. If we're in town, or on the highway, we take rest. And instead of having to double everything, we have one set of equipment, we use up one car. You know, and I'm, I'm not a politician, so I'm just a fire scientist. And, but you'll never find a car completely outfitted for that price, I'm telling you. It's not gonna happen.
No.
Because you're probably like, if you said, you're probably looking at thirty-five thousand per car, and probably looking at another five or six thousand to outfit it.
And then you gotta pay somebody outfitted.
It's very expensive when you start outfitting cars, with lights and sirens and...
It is, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
We're fine, we're fine. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the purchase, uh, dependent upon receipt of that check.
I'll make a motion...
Or entertain a motion to table?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase for thirty-two eight fifty, uh, dependent upon the receipt of the insurance check. Thirty, I'm sorry, thirty-two eight fifty was the total given, right?
What'd you say you need, what'd you say you needed? How much did you need, how much money did you need?
It's, uh, three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
It's the difference, huh?
The total for the vehicle was thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty.
Okay. Now...
Pending, pending the twenty-nine thousand, not the check.
We're not gonna actually attempt to purchase it until you've gone and seen it, and we have the check...
And we can do that, I can...
And we have the check in hand?
Yes.
Yeah, how about, 'cause I don't, I don't know how, I'll have to ask this guy how he does that, whether he does a check, or whether he'll do another different way, so that once we go down there and look at this, if the vehicle's good, and if we think, you know, if we think it's gonna work for what, what our needs are, instead of having to go down there twice, you know, you know, go down once, pick it up, if it, if everything is as he says.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the purchase price of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for a command vehicle for the fire department. Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the purchase of the fire command vehicle on the amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
No.
Motion carries.
That's all, thank you all.
What? Well, that's, I thought of that, too.
Um, I'm gonna do a switch, a switch-o, change-o electric.
Hi, guys, I've been out for a while. I wanna give you a quick update on what's, what's been going on. Uh, work being done from eight-nine twenty-four to nine-four twenty-four. We repaired and replaced a lot of the streetlights, uh, clean trucks and chops. We did three-phase meter inventory, we're trying to get ready to replace those with the AMI meters that we have, uh, have in hand, uh, installed, uh, the temp for VKs, 'cause they wanted to insulate their building, and they went ahead and prepaid the eighty-five dollars for that temporary before that, uh, and that will not be show on their, uh, building for rent. Meter reading and re-read, rereads, uh, we loaded the wire onto the, onto the wire trailer for the Farmers Elbers, Elevator Project. The transformer for that project showed up, and is set out there on their lot. Uh, they have to provide the, the, uh, concrete pad for, uh, and their conduits to come out of it, our conduits to come into it, uh, for, for their use and our use, too. Uh, we had, uh, several locates, emergency locates, uh, we had some dig-ups that, uh, had been taken care of. Prepared stuff on Kerry's truck, I went down the railroad tracks, and I accidentally caught a, uh, on the, uh, I was looking at the sixty-nine line where we need to trim trees, and I caught a bent part of it, and it was just, it just needs repaired. We installed the guy wire at Thomas Street for rerouting that wire, and that job is completed. We prepped, uh, for the elevator tank job. The guys have, uh, put cover-ups on the, on the pole at, uh, Monroe City Ready Mix, Monroe City Ready Mix's pole, where we're going to continue on to the east for to, uh, for the elevator's transformer. And those poles are installed, we're just loading, we got the wire loaded, and that's a project that we're going to try and, uh, stay on top of next week. Uh, we cleaned up the pole at the airport, that's another pole that we have to install. It's got some slack in it, but it's not a danger to anything, uh, as of right now. That locate has been turned in, and we will, we, I need to ask George to borrow the black truck for that, because I know there is a telephone line going down that road. Uh, we shut off metal, uh, Missouri Metal Craft, and turned them right back on, uh, in the, in the same twenty minutes. We, we replaced the broken pole with a streetlight at Route J, Boe Ranch, uh, in the, in the park area. Working on a punch list for the east substation, uh, for, uh, for, uh, those contractors to come back, and, uh, we're trying to get that buttoned up as soon as possible. We got, I'm gonna tell you, Ronnie, forty-seven meters ready to go back to vision meter for various reasons. Some of them have bad parts inside the meters, some, one of them was broken in shipping, and we're going to get them sent back and get them, uh, repaired and sent back to us. We worked on, Chris, Chris Whelan worked on a lock at City Hall today, I think it's working.
Uh, Jennifer Tetchman said she couldn't get a lock again.
Oh, shoot, okay. Well, we thought we had it. We got in parts to repair hot stick, uh, and, uh, we had numerous shut-offs, uh, last, uh, last time. The next thing is the, I know we've been talking about chicken switches, everybody's talking about talking about this chicken switch, 'cause it end up, could be said a different way. So, I have the bids for the chicken switch. One was, uh, from CBS ArcSafe, two of them was from CBS ArcSafe. One was from a vendor, uh, Danny Sims with Graybar. Uh, you, you, they have the...
They are printed off on the side, they have, uh, Anixter.
That's a perfect copy.
We had, we had three quotes, uh, one from Anixter for seven thousand four hundred and ten dollars, one from Danny Sims with Graybar for six thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars, and we have one from CBS ArcSafe, the manufacturer, of five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. I am asking for the five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for this switch. It is a very valuable part of our safety, instead of standing in front of the cabinet to re-energize the cabinet, and it fit, uh, it's like standing in front of the white people if something goes wrong. And the only thing you got in between it and, and the man is a steel door, and if you've watched any YouTube videos of those, those steel doors don't stay shut with the, with the latches. It blows open, and the only thing that aluminum suit does is provide you a portion. So, I'm asking to approve the five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars from ArcSafe, or from CBS ArcSafe to, uh...
The amount that you just stated, where's that from?
On the first line.
Yeah, that's something I'd like to clarification, just slightly, 'cause this one quote has multiple lines on it.
Well, this thing...
This is what you're looking for, the top line of the quote, okay? And that, that's shown here, I just wasn't sure.
So, one was a hard-wired remote?
One of them is a hard, the, the lower one is a hard-wired, this is totally remote, the top line. And we can stand outside of the building with the, with the totally remote one, to be completely clear of it.
It's not something that gets used that often, but every time it's used, there's a risk of...
No, it's okay, I, I get it.
Yeah.
And if you all prefer to do the hard-wired, it is the, skip the, be the, be the third line down, and Anixter did not provide that.
So, it's eleven hundred more.
All right. So, what the chair will entertain is a motion to approve the quote from CBS ArcSafe for the RSK CSO one dash W, an amount of five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to approve, approve your wireless remote operator, an amount of five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the floor to approve the purchase of the wireless remote operator from CBS ArcSafe, an amount of five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, so no, no. Motion carries.
I have two more items, um, Aaron Plum, he, while he changed his name, his name is now Aaron Ben. He, he has left the city for green casters, and I am asking to go out for a replacement, uh, put ads in the paper, and seek a replacement employee for the electric department.
How many employees do you have?
I have myself, Chris Whelan, and Justin First. And if one of us is out of town, we would be very... And if one of us is out of town, we would be very sorry, Danny.
ArcSafe.
Yeah.
What's your opinion?
I, I'm just putting that out there. My next thing is, is, uh, I had brought this up a while back. We have thirty batteries in the east substation that, they are holding voltage, but I'm being told that they will not hold the amperage to operate the switchgear in that building. I've already went out and found three quotes, I'm waiting on those quotes to get back. I, uh, asked, uh, Dave Wick with a engineering firm. Uh, I asked Interstate Batteries. And I also went online and found another firm, uh, that just sells the batteries themselves. We don't need the rack and all that garbage, we just need the batteries. The ones that I went out and found online were ridiculous, they were a thousand dollars apiece. Dave Wick, the old, yeah, the old bid before that was around the twenty-five thousand dollar mark. So, I'm just preparing you for sticker shop if I bring the quotes back next time.
How many batteries are there?
Thirty.
Thirty.
And they're a thousand apiece?
Well, Dave, Dave Wick's, Dave Wick's old quote was twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
So, it's way less than a thousand, but.
Ten. Ten years. Ten plus.
Yeah, yeah, because I had to replace them once. And now we're, we have new ones, we replaced them once, now we're ready again. And, uh, we didn't have the power, we didn't have the power on at that substation building to keep them energized and with the cold weather, it, it didn't do them any good.
At that age, I'm not surprised.
Yeah.
This one.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to tell you that, uh, the sticker quote.
Sticker shop.
Give me a sticker shop, twenty-five grand.
It's, it's part of it, um.
But I didn't know if you, if you all wanted to think about, uh, an employee or not.
I think we should, I mean, because it's not like we can get one overnight.
Okay, let's do this, let's make it easy, I'll entertain a motion to authorize, uh, Carrie Lee to, uh, seek applicants for the open position in the electric department. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to seek applicants.
Okay, we have a second, we have a motion, second on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You got your approval.
All right, appreciate it, guys, thank you very much.
First quarter, first quarter.
All right, Mr. Water?
Mr. Water.
He's the guy.
Mr. Water, I guess you didn't call me Mr. Sewers. All right, uh, there's some stuff in your packet. We'll start off with, uh, the, uh, bid from Core and Main. It's for a drop-in water meter. There are, there's only one water meter left that we're aware of in the entire system that has not been changed out. This water meter is one of, one of the two water meters for Cannon Water District, uh, that we feed water to. So, um, we sell to Cannon and then, of course, they turn around and we sell our water. Uh, one of the meters is what's called a mag meter, we're gonna have that one tested, um, by the, by sometime before winter. And the other is a, a meter that's not testable. And it has a register on top of it that has a battery in it that puts a signal out. The battery is so weak, it won't put a signal out to the endpoint to get it to the collector so they can't accept, uh, the, the reading down on beacon water. The issue's gonna be that that register is just gonna go dead here. Who knows, it might be, next week might be two years down the road, but a register itself is almost eight hundred dollars.
And you can't change the battery.
No, you can't change the battery.
That'd be too easy.
They're sealed units, so, um, I see you guys looking, did anybody find it? I've seen it in the back end, it's out, I sent it, okay. Um, I just want to make sure you s- you saw that. So, what it is, is, is any mechanical meter, after a while, they start slowing down. They get stuck in them, it just happens. So, this, what I'm proposing that we buy is just the guts of the meter. So, I'll take out four bolts, I'll pull the guts in the register off, I'll put this next one in, put the four bolts back in, we're back in business. It's a brand-new register, a brand-new meter, it'll read accurately, we won't have any water loss on this meter. And this thing has thirty million gallons on it, so it's, it's already lived well past its useful life. So, I, I would like, uh, to hopefully get this last meter put in. If, uh, it is expensive one, but like I said.
It increases our billing to Cannon.
It, it will just a little.
Might pay for itself.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is on the one that doesn't, doesn't, uh, service a lot. It's at the end of the airport road and it goes south to, I know there's a Quinn down there and, and it heads, it feeds just south right there along Highway twenty-four. I think it might go as far down as the White Barn, um, processing place down. I think it runs down in that area. It's, it does, doesn't service a lot, it doesn't have a whole lot of monthly usage. The other one's the mag meter, which they are normally very accurate for a long time, there's no moving parts. But yes, we could be losing anywhere from one gallon to hundreds of gallons a month.
Right.
Out of that meter, we just don't know, or don't know.
Or when it stops for.
Yeah, or once out, we're gonna lose a lot.
And then we'd be guessing.
Yeah, or we won't hopefully go read the meter again in the month.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, I can move on or stop and let you guys ask any more questions about that?
Oh, I'm assuming this is more of a specialty thing?
The meter?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's made by census, so you have to buy census.
To drop in.
To drop in, to.
Otherwise, you have to take out the whole, whole.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, otherwise, yeah, and then you're talking a lot, it's, we're seventeen hundred dollars to get a meter, a Badger meter, which would be the same as the rest of our meters, but this one's just as, just as good, it's just, you know. I'm just suggesting you make it new while we have the opportunity.
Yeah.
Okay, so, you need.
I need approval for that, for, uh, unless it's, I, I, I don't know, I, I, I don't know how much the mayor can go ahead and approve, but it's, it's.
Zero.
Okay, then, yes, I need your approval.
Uh, to approve the purchase of this, uh, meter drop-in, simply.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the drop-in meter, is the amount one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars, or I'm on the wrong page?
They're on the right page.
That's right.
You're, yeah, that sounds correct, I don't have anyone with me.
That's fine. We have a second, we have a motion, second on the floor to approve the, uh, three-inch drop-in meter for one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, motion carries, approved, next.
Okay, next, uh, same as last time, I have the, uh, the, the quotes for the three-inch and four-inch pumps, uh, in, in here. I believe last time I told you that I was gonna look for, look to try to get the accessories cheaper. If you notice, I, there's now a quote in there from USA Blue Book, which is, uh, normally the cheapest place to buy anything, water. And the, the, then, it wasn't, it wasn't cheap. It was cheaper than a hydrokinetics accessories bid, but, uh, the velocity bid, they, they buy in such bulk that what they're, what they're able to charge for the accessories, if you actually look at the cost of their accessories, they're charging twenty dollars for something that Blue Book is charging us, would charge us eighty dollars. Uh, and I asked, how can you do that, because I want them to be aluminum, I want this, and he said, that is what we, he said, but we buy thousands at a time. And then, you know, it's, so, yeah, that's what they do, is they leave their, their pump prices up here, but, but cut so low on the accessories that their, their combination price is cheaper than, uh, buying the hydrokinetics pump and then adding the Blue Book to the hydrokinetics pump.
George, I'm not understanding the difference in these quotes.
Okay, this is.
Velocity, you said hydrokinetics size, so I'm gonna just forget about that.
Yeah, yeah, this, this one here was just for, um, that, that, that's just for different connectors.
Oh, okay.
And I actually made this a, I, I thought, well, maybe I can get, get away with not buying so much from Blue Book and, and cut the cost back. But even this dollar amount is more expensive than the velocity, uh, that, that their stuff combined here because it was so cheap for them to, to sell the accessories. There was no way for me to, to, to finagle it any way to make the whole, the whole pump and accessories cheaper. The pump doesn't do me any good without the accessories. And it's a hundred foot of hose and the couplers and everything we need to go with it. I am gonna suggest velocity, I'm gonna ask that we go with a four-inch pump from Velocity.
And that's for the total of five thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
And thirteen cents, yes, sir. Yes, and that pump is a very good pump, uh, I don't know if anybody's dealt with any, uh, Godwin pumps, but they. They, they are, they are a big pump. Uh, there, there's a couple of big ones, Gould, oh, I'm sorry.
I noticed that the, on the Velocity, it's showing a three-inch.
Yes, um, and he was supposed to get me something that, 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 uh, changed that. I actually have an email that I can send out to everybody if you want to see it, that says that, that he messed up on that.
Oh, okay, but it's still.
Because all those other pieces show four-inch.
Exactly, yeah, it is a four-inch pump, then he quoted a four-inch and a three-inch, I believe I only gave you the four-inch one. If the accessories are four-inch on there.
Accessory, but the pump is three.
Yeah, that, that is actually, uh, supposed to be a four-inch pump.
And it's the right price.
Yes, the, the, yeah, the price is the three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, yes. Yes, and I, I, like I said, Joe was, Joe sent me an email that said, I'm sorry, I, I messed up on that, I'll try to get it cleaned up and get you a, a quote back, but it didn't.
With that in mind, then I'll, I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the quote for a four-inch pump with the accessories in a total of five thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the, accept the bid from Velocity for the four-inch pump and accessories in amount of five thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirteen cents, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and a second on the floor to accept the quote from Velocity for the four-inch trash pump and accessories in amount of five thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirteen cents, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, motion carries.
All right, we've been working on the fire hydrant over on Long Street that, uh, we talked about last time also. Uh, the foot valve is not coming out, we are going to have to replace that fire hydrant altogether. Once we get it out, we might be able to look in through the bottom, figure out what's going on, and might be able to rebuild that and use it, maybe flip that in over there on the Southern Street, one where we need to replace that one.
Okay.
So, you know, right, right now, I'm not asking to, to buy anymore. I do have, uh, feelers, or I, I sent out a email to get pricing, so I will have pricing, we do need to buy, buy them. And last thing is, is that we do have a small water leak, it's very small, it's on Elm Street at the entrance to Potterfield Trucking, right past the old, uh, uh, Green State Shed. It's just one of their, if you drive down there, if you see a little bit of water in their gravel, uh, we're gonna, we're, we're planning on excavating that, uh, Monday, Tuesday. We got, with the way meter reading is falling, uh, I'm not sure when I'm gonna actually, unless it blows up. If it blows up, we'll be there right then, but, uh, just so you know.
Sounds great, thank you, George.
Is that pirate on the lawn, is that still good and operating?
It is not, no, it has a, uh, plastic bag over it, uh, so, Rich, I, I was gonna give you, I was gonna, I was gonna tell you all about that, but, uh, yeah, you won't be able to use it, it's a lawn and board.
Just a short, while it's still sort of water, I guess, when's our deadline to figure out what we're gonna do with Canada?
At, at the risk of saying too much, I think you just did when you approved the forty-five thousand dollars to Black and Beach.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's a lot cheaper than the numbers I was hearing from the Canada.
You know, and, uh, I think what will happen is, I will, unless someone here wants to do so tonight, at the next meeting, I'll ask for a formal, uh, decision from the board, at which time the board, board will vote on it.
It's, are you the lead line guy, or is that somebody else?
It's somebody else, but he's been working with them.
Okay, um, isn't there some big, something due soon?
Yes, October sixteenth, it is due. Uh, right now, I'll hold up this with DNR.
Oh, good, okay.
They haven't approved it.
Yeah, they haven't approved the bids. Uh, I'm an alderman in Canton also, so we read the bids and approved ours almost two months ago. And earlier this week, we just finally got the approval from DNR to go ahead and start.
Okay.
And I sent that along to Danette, because she had, I know she had emailed DNR, so, uh, really, I can work with somebody, actually, you're working with Dan Dover also. Uh, we can get something put together, uh, to send in by October sixteenth, just to keep from getting in trouble. But we, we are heading in the, the city's heading in the correct direction.
I just thought about that, thank you.
They're not waiting on us.
No, 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 for once. No, and I didn't mean it.
I like your port, not us, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing we have in here on the gas department, and I, uh, Terry's not here, and I do not know what I'm supposed to do.
He's, uh, I talked to him about that, he's waiting for some more estimates to provide a council.
Okay, moving right along.
Yep.
Street, nothing, airport.
You mentioned that it's Ryan Huesman's gonna come next, Nick, I'm just gonna give you a little heads up on what it's about. I've been trying to figure out how to get federal money for a long time. And I was sitting out there at the airport the other day, my phone rang, and it was this Ryan Huesman, he works for Meco Engineering. He is wanting to be a consultant for the city to look for these grants. Uh, first question I had is, how much does it cost for you to be a consultant? He said that it doesn't cost anything per se, where they get their money from is if they get a grant, then the engineering part is part of the grant, and that's where, how they get paid.
Yeah.
So, when he shows up next week, he's gonna give us a overview of what he can look for. The president signed, not to, in May, a, a new, uh, general aviation bill for several billion dollars, so there's money out there we can possibly get. Uh, like making gets fifty to eighty thousand dollars a year just for us to keep in maintenance of the airport. If we could get that, that would be a huge shot in the arm, it would just take a complete load off the store. So, that's what he, he's about next, next meeting. Um, the past few days, we've had several people come through and use the courtesy car, spend the night. One of them was a young lady from, uh, Maryland going, she had been in Maryland, she's a member of Space Tech, she's a major and, uh, she was in Space Force, she was in the airport for fifteen years and, and now she's a member of the Space Force. And she was in, uh, the White House giving tours, and she's moving to Colorado Springs. So, she stopped and spent the night, used her courtesy van. And there was some, uh, man and woman come through also from DC, that work in a laboratory out there that are, has to do with these vaccines, that, uh, like for COVID and all kinds of other things, so they was kinda need to talk to. So, um, there've been some activity and hopefully, things will be good out there.
Yeah, looks nice.
Any questions about what goes on, or?
No, I like your Facebook posts, that's how I keep up with them, with that.
I'm gonna get with Mike one of these days, and we're gonna set up a Facebook page for Captain Ben Smith Airport.
Okay, cool.
Maybe Alex can always figure it out for us.
See, that's the trick, is it has to be a business page or a municipality page, has to be linked to a personal account.
Has to be what?
Has to be linked to a personal account.
Oh.
So, you can't just go out there and, and create a completely isolated account for the airport, it has to be tied to a personal account.
So, could it be tied to my personal account somehow?
Yeah.
And then it'd just be a entity of that?
Right, right.
Well, I'll come by and talk to you about it sometime, we'll. Also, this, Ryan Huesman wants to come have a meeting with me and the mayor and Mike, or any of y'all that wanna come beforehand so he can get a grasp on what he's gonna present. I'll, I'll let.
Yeah, you just set it up, we'll contact the board members, see who can or cannot attend. I was able, believe it or not, to be at the airport when, uh, I call her Major Anna, uh, flew through, uh, come out and spent, uh, spent the evening out there, very pleasant. Very pleasant, young lady, everybody's younger than me, uh, young lady, major in Air Force, and had just transferred to the Space Force. And then I got to meet, uh, the two individuals that were going to that, uh, I can't remember what they were going to, something, uh.
Going to a, uh, some kind of a meeting in Colorado Springs.
Yeah, they were, they were very pleasant, what, what, the reason why I bring this up, every, all these people just were absolutely amazed, um, at what we had to offer, uh, to them when they came through here to buy fuel, uh, and stop and, and spend a little bit of time, uh, they were very appreciative, I think they very much enjoyed the hospitality, so thank you, Dell, thank you a lot.
My pleasure.
All right, Mosswood. Of course, the pool's closed, and they did all the maintenance out there, and I think that they're gonna be, uh, well-prepared, hopefully, for next season to, uh, start without any, uh, of the, uh, repeat of any of the hiccups we had, we had this year. Next thing we have is, uh, presentation of the bills and approval of payments under Tab eleven supposedly.
Alex puts the, this up in the, the hand. There's like a page with like a half a dozen checks separate.
Those there are what we've paid prior to the council meeting, Danette wanted to do that as a sort of transparent, so they can show everybody what's the more necessity things that have been approved.
Okay.
You've got, uh, the contracts in here with, uh, the lawn care, uh, the insurance company, uh, Consolva Electric, uh, we have to pay the postmaster before we can send out the, the mail that goes for all the utility billing. Uh, and now I don't know what the last one is, but it's just something that these things do occur, and she wants to give the bill to you out there for the board to be aware, and then on the next page, we have accounts payable.
The elite lawn care, is that for one cut or two, or?
Uh, it's for several, I believe.
That's like every two weeks, or no, I, I better stop, I don't know.
I don't know.
Better stop.
But that's the one I, essentially by, we're contracted to pay them on a certain day.
Correct.
It's agreed upon, I'm not.
Right, we, we kinda ran into that very, very early on. We had, we had, had to backtrack and go again in all of that contract.
The other one wasn't on there. The one that's got the majority of them.
Zero?
Yeah.
Um, I think he had just submitted his as a caller, but he has been, he has his check waiting.
Is that dispatch service, is that monthly or annual?
They bill it monthly, but we get an invoice every six months.
Okay, so that's.
Six months.
Six months worth, okay.
I said, I don't remember seeing, so we're calling that monthly.
So it's basically ninety, like ninety-two a year.
I'll make a motion to approve bills payable, we have a motion on the floor to approve bills payable, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bill payable, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no, motion carries. All right, uh, next thing we have on the agenda, uh, new business, uh, Bill number seven and ordinance amending section eighty-six point zero eight, point zero five zero of the Code of Ordinances of the Monroe City Municipal Code, located under Tab twelve. Section eighty-six point zero eight, point zero five zero utility policy, this, uh, bill was actually read once, then, uh, removed from consideration. Was, uh, revisited based upon input from, uh, board members and input, uh, from the citizens, and this is the result of those changes. The board initially approved the first reading, and as I said, it was later removed from consideration, uh, and edits were made, and this is the product of the changes that were requested.
I mean, I think we fairly thoroughly discussed this at the, uh, last, uh, meeting, and while everyone wasn't necessarily, uh, overjoyed with it, uh, they, they accepted that that was probably the best solution you were gonna get.
Yep.
Two readings, the first and the second, the second will be a roll call.
Saying we've already published, done the public, required published part.
They've been published since June.
Well, I'll make a motion then, uh, for first reading, Bill number seven, uh, for an ordinance amending section eighty-six to zero eight, oh, five zero of the Code of the Ordinances of the Monroe City Municipal Code.
We have a motion on the floor to approve Bill number seven and ordinance amending section eighty-six point zero eight, point zero five zero of the Code of Ordinances of the Monroe City Municipal Code, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve an ordinance amending section eighty-six point zero eight, point zero five zero of the Code of Ordinances of the Monroe City Municipal Code, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the second reading of Bill number seven and ordinance amending sec, section eighty-six point zero eight, point zero five O of the Code of the Ordinances of this, of the Monroe City Municipal Code.
We have a motion on the floor for second reading of an ordinance amending section eighty-six point zero eight, point zero five zero of the Code of Ordinances of the Monroe City Municipal Code, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor for the second reading of Bill number seven and ordinance amending section eighty-six point zero eight, point zero five zero of the Code of Ordinances of the Monroe City Municipal Code by votes, by voice vote, roll call.
Aye.
You have to, you have to ask them each by name.
Okay, uh, Lori Quinn?
Yes.
Jason Oswald?
Yes.
Rob Simpson?
Yes.
Mike Schneider?
Yes.
Ray Smith?
Yes.
The ordinance is approved by voice, second reading approved, next on the agenda is Bill number eleven, an ordinance authorizing.
It says ten.
Ten or eleven?
Says Bill number eleven. Okay, I stand corrected, the actual document. I'm going by the, uh, going by the, uh, agenda. Alex, Bill number ten, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a real estate contract by and between the City of Monroe City, Missouri and Lori Buckman, and the execution of a quick claim deed to city property to Lori Buckman purchaser under said real estate contract. The property is no, otherwise known as ten twenty Long Street, Monroe City, Missouri. So we need to have a.
Uh, just as a point of clarification, that was the, the bids we took for the parking.
Correct.
At the last.
Yeah, what you can't do is like grandpa's.
Yeah.
Yes, it was for grandpa's, and I have a question, uh, this is more pertaining to the requirements.
So it's.
This only needs, this only needs a simple motion.
Okay, cause this, I mean.
It's not a, it's not, it's a, this needs a simple motion, is this need, it only, it doesn't have documentation.
Cause I would think we could just approve that under, is it different because it's, I don't know.
Well, how about this, we'll do it the way we think it's supposed to be done, I'll be over and above what may be required.
I think it's.
All right, so I'll entertain a, a, uh, motion for a first reading of Bill number ten.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor for the first reading of Bill number ten, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a real estate contract by and between the City of Monroe City, Missouri and Lori Buckman, and the execution of a quick claim deed to city property to Lori Buckman purchaser under said real estate contract, the property otherwise known as ten twenty Long Street, Monroe City, Missouri, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill number ten, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
I'll make a motion, we have a second reading.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for a second reading, Bill number ten, and an ordinance authorizing the execution of a real estate contract by and between the City of Monroe City, Missouri and Lori Buckman, and the execution of a quick claim deed to said property, to city property to Lori Buckman purchaser under said real estate contract for the property otherwise known as ten twenty Long Street, Monroe City, Missouri. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, we have a second reading by voice.
Lori Buckman, yes, Jason Oswald?
Yes.
Rob Simpson?
Yes.
Mike Schneider?
Yes.
Ray Smith?
Yes.
And that should do it, no matter what the requirements were. Orders approved. Okay, do we have any unfinished business?
Yeah.
Where's that at?
Uh, that was behind the presentation of.
Okay, so who's giving this discussion?
Me and Mike, so we're supposed to kind of go over some of it.
Go ahead, Mike.
Proactively, I had gotten bids at the very beginning, before I was even sworn in, trying to get things up to speed, but then without a budget, I hadn't really wanted to present it. Um, but we do have four or five different bids, actually.
Yep.
Ranging from fifteen thousand dollars.
How much?
Fif, or fourteen to fifty.
Okay.
To.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Would, would we not print these, th- these have been printed on paper?
The ones that were staples, those were ones that were last minute ones that, uh, I don't.
Yeah, I forgot I had gotten one from DMO.
Oh, yeah.
My apologies.
This is, yeah, this is, that's right.
But the bulk of them will be behind the accounts payable.
All right, behind the, behind accounts payable?
We have to behind that.
Under eleven? Okay.
It'll start, it'll say project investment, a lot of stuff I live, the first one you'll see there was from Verbosity, they're the ones who currently host our website currently, and it's not the best. It's very, very outdated, and many of the major functions in the website are no longer available, I think our theme was discontinued years ago as well. So, uh, Verbosity being the one who hosted it, I figured we'd reach out to them and see what it would cost, and it's about what we pay currently, about a hundred fifty-nine a month is what we can, I could come to. I put the timelines and the project investments into it, uh, the, I don't, couldn't tell you much about the tracker, but the ones that, uh, we liked the best was the Civic Plus one. They're the ones who do our codification for our ordinances, and they also do municipal websites as well. That will be the last couple that you will see, that'll have, uh, project costs at the top, with premium and ultimate design, the premium design, that three E sub ninety-five is just for a templated one, and they have a wide variety of templates, and it's very easy to use, and I think it's something that we could do pretty easily in-house as well, they offer scheduled training that we could do at any time, we can make updates on the fly, and do any announcements or anything as well on this website in real time from our computers as well at the city hall. We, uh, it also has ADA compliance, and I've seen it in our little demonstration that, uh, me and Danette sat through, that we can type anything in any sort of format, and it will automatically put that in ADA compliant format and structure in order to keep that compliance. Uh, it also is integrated well with the Code of Ordinances, which was passed recently, and that we're still working on our republication on. And I think that's probably the most recommended, it'll have a twenty percent discount the first year and a ten percent discount for, I believe, two years after that, and then we would be paying the three thousand seven ninety-five annually. It's eight hundred fifty for just one time to get it all started and off the ground.
And we're paying nineteen hundred a year now, and they do squat.
Yeah, if you go back to the Verbosity, you'll see that it'll say that they'll contact us monthly with updates, and we don't hear anything back from them, and given how poorly things have been done with the website and updates and frustrations Mike and I both had, I wouldn't really recommend using them at this point in time.
Is this a current quote, cause I see some of these date back to April and May.
The Civic is.
Yes, the Civic is the most updated.
Yeah, that's the newest.
The most recent, the others were, other than the Verbosity, Verbosity was.
The micro unit agreement with the premium design, uh, quotes from Civic Plus.
And that, that ends up total, what'd you say, three thousand a year?
Thirty-seven ninety-five, that's without the discounts.
Without the discounts.
Yeah, and that also discounts the Civic, uh, the codification portion too, so.
Yep.
So, reduce what we're paying on that now?
Yeah. Like twenty percent the first year.
For the, uh, muni code updates and qualification, yes.
Yep.
Reduces that cost, it's kinda like, uh, uh, what you get from spectrum when you bow.
The package, yeah, they have the phone bill for, you know, this and that.
Yes.
Another thing that might be of interest too, is there are also some enhanced options that we can get as well, one for SMS messaging, so if we wanted to put out an alert to city residents, we can do that. We can do that already with the premium template design, they can sign up for email notifications for any alerts, and we can email it to them in real time and schedule however.
That's that you?
Announcements are pretty fluid, we can set them for however time, and it's very, very simple to use, I would be surprised if anyone wasn't able to use it.
Yeah, and their mobile sites are phenomenal.
But these things that they say are optional, I don't know why they would be optional, I mean, isn't just, like, there's a bids and RFPs, two hundred and twenty dollars a year, couldn't we just have a tab on our website and put that, a bid, bid documents there?
Um, we could put announcement for bids and such in there, uh, I think that's more if we wanted to have a dedicated webpage that we wanted them to host, it's more what I understand that to be. And we can link that with our front desk currently, and if we end up doing something else with software, we can pretty fluidly and easily change it all around. And they'll work with us pretty well however we want.
I mean, we do have business listings on there now with, along with, uh, Chamber, but I don't know the last time it was updated.
And, and getting the.
I don't have the data to even do it, I mean, I made a couple of obvious edits, but, I mean.
Big problem is many of the software that would normally be up to date, if Verbosity was doing the website, how it should have been done if it was properly maintained and no longer functional without having to rework the whole website either way.
Okay, board, do you want to move on this, or do you want to table it till the next meeting?
Do we have an immediate, like?
Need.
Deadline, anything coming up with it? No, uh, I mean, I, go ahead.
Think of, think of, picture yourself as a, a potential manufacturer, and you pull up our current website, and you go, next.
Well, a part of that is because it's not updated, it doesn't, it's not because it's horrible, horrible, I mean, it was not.
Right.
I mean, it was not disgusting, but it's just so outdated. And if, I would rather have no website than an outdated website.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd, I'd rather just go away.
I can do that.
Than just.
I do think websites are, are certainly important in the current, I mean, one of the first things I do is like if I go, if I'm looking at something, I do a Google or Facebook look for it or whatever. I mean, that's just the way it is.
The big thing though with our websites is that is where many of our customers do go online to make those online payments. And with our layers and many of the website foundational stuff going out, I don't know. It could be years, could be months before everything's outdated to the point where we're.
Know that works.
We'd have to redo it all anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that kinda changes this conversation.
It does.
Just a little bit. So, it does sound like there is, uh, some, some level of immediacy required for this.
I also think that it would probably decrease the number of phone calls you have to deal for, you know, simple questions.
Once again, if it's updated.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Whose role is that? I mean, isn't it gonna come?
If, if we do update it for Verbosity and Mike will tell you anytime he's done updates, we have to do them incrementally and we do get charged for everything. Whereas if we want to make updates this way, it, it's there, it's already updated.
Yeah, the updates that I'm making now are painful and I'm nervous doing them because I, there's been a couple times now I made an update and it took the whole site down. And I was not happy, but I got it back up, but in like a half hour or so. And it's because of all these plugins are outdated and, and on or even exist, are supported.
So, even if we wanted to do updates, they would maybe purchase their plugin packages, which were considerable, an additional, I think it was two hundred and fifty for a one-time setup and that's seventy a month. That's just to get the plugins in order for us to have it in-house to update it ourselves.
Yeah, I mean, we've got an event sling, but I can add an event and it doesn't show up.
Cause I recommend, I think you need it because everybody nowadays.
Yeah, it's the first place they'd go.
And if they're looking for something from Monroe City, they're gonna type it in Google and they get the bad page.
Yeah, it looks horrible on a cell phone.
I like that, I like it to be a good thing to have. So, you, you prefer that, you'd recommend we move center rather than wait there?
I don't know what we would wait for. I mean, don't we need?
It's just money. It's just like, I just, we're spending so much money.
I know.
When is the thirty-seven ninety-five due?
I believe at the third or fourth year.
What?
It's, uh, first year's twenty percent off, the next two years are ten percent off.
So, it'll be lower than three thousand the first year.
Yeah, plus eight fifty for the one-time fee, the first year.
Wait till later.
And you compare the eight fifty to seven thousand, fourteen thousand, nine thousand.
That's quite a bit less.
Yeah.
And you guys have already been working with?
Yeah, we're working with him on the codification already. And it ties in directly to the codification. They don't have to go, they can click the link and boom, there it is. So, they don't have to go to a separate site and try to search it.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept that, uh, recommended bid from, what was the name of them?
Civic Plus.
Civic Plus.
So, I have a motion on the floor to accept the bid from Civic Plus for the premium design website service. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the cheaper of the two.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the bid from Civic Plus, the premium design website service. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. No?
No, it's just aye.
The ayes have it, the motion carries. You got your approval.
Now, it begins.
By the time it'll roll out, part of January anyway.
Now, is it, is there anything on here about us getting money from someone? No. All right, any other? This is your meeting?
No, we're just, we're just.
Yeah.
We're just ready to say it's done. Our meeting.
If there, uh, are, is there any other unfinished business? I would entertain a motion to. A motion, second on the floor, adjourn all in favor.
No.
It's put on here, but there's not a reason.
It's just always, always.
Okay, I thought we had.
There is no closed session.
Okay.
I think it, it depends on law.
Oh, we have it on here.
So, did we actually get a?
At least it only had.
Yeah, that's right.
I didn't know.
That's okay.
Okay, if you have a motion, second on the floor, adjourn all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. You stand adjourned.
Uh, I was saying, you, uh, we are, what you, I don't know where we are.
Oh, Jason's head. Jason's.
Yes.